I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America, and to the very high court of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting, the first part of tonight's meeting is a joint meeting between the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and the task at hand is to consider the budget transfer requests that are intended to balance out, to the extent possible, the FY15 budget. I know that the town accountant has been working very closely with the acting town manager up to the 23rd hour, at least, to try to move as much as they can to balance out the accounts. So what we are going to do is take these requests one at a time. I'll read through quickly what the request is, unless you prefer to do that, Mr. Lynch.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted, if I could, just have some opening remarks.
Sure.
Once you...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And what we'll do is we'll have the Finance Committee take action. We'll first open it up, obviously, for questions, clarification from board members, and then the Finance Committee will act on each request, and the Board of Selectmen will act on each request. If it work.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, we have before you a very large pile, and I apologize for that, but we have been working diligently, in particular, the town accountant, her staff, and the finance person that I asked to come work on this project here in Winchton with me. I think it's, I think it's very good news. I mean, I know when the town was looking at its financial picture a month and a half ago, there was, it seemed pretty bleak in terms of how things were looking for fiscal year 15 and for fiscal year 16, and I think what we're seeing here is, and what we did at town meeting, is indicative of the progress that we've all made, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the town departments in closing many of these up. What we've got primarily here before you today is, as the bills have come in from the various departments, which have until July 15th, usually this wouldn't be a problem if there was lots of money floating around in there, but it's a very tight budget, and we're trying to do this without running any deficits into next year. What we've had before us really is the opportunity to close these out so that there are no departmental budgets, ordinary departmental budgets with deficits. The snow and ice deficit, we've whittled down to $19,000, which means that's $19,000 that will be carried over into fiscal year 16, which isn't bad, given the financial, well, given the, the snow that we've had this year, and, you know, what we've had set aside for that to start the fiscal year. So that certainly is a positive, particularly as we look at making sure the fiscal year 16 is manageable. The only issue really that we, that we have at this point in time is we're continuing to work with the school department, trying to get information from them and get their books closed out. They have not provided us with their transfers yet. Those have to be in by tomorrow in order to close out the books in the proper way. State law is very clear that all this has to be done by the 15th of the month of July. If those are not done, then it's probable that those, those budgets will be, those bills that are out there will not be paid because they cannot be paid after that date, and they will go into fiscal year 16 as unpaid bills, and they will have to be paid out of fiscal year 16 money, because we will not, we cannot legally, and we will not, run a deficit for the town of Winchton for fiscal year 15. So we're still waiting on their June 30th payroll. We're still waiting for those bills to come in, the transfers to come in, but I'm happy to say that for all the other town departments, we've narrowed that down, we've closed out any of the issues that they have, and we have the snow and ice down to $19,000, which is pretty remarkable, I think, for the town of Winchton.
It is. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I will read, can I do it without echoing, each of the transfer requests, and some of them have requests from several line items, so I'll give you the, the amounts from each line item and then the total transfer. So this is from the Collector Treasurer's computer. Line item, $500. The Collector Treasurer postage, $387.40. The Collector Treasurer tax, $230. Collector Treasurer office, $120. Collector Treasurer dues, $125.60. And Collector Treasurer's software, $137. It's a total of $1,500 that would be transferred to the Snow and Ice account, and purpose, obviously, is to cover the Snow and Ice deficit. Any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for a vote from the Finance Committee.
Move for the transfer.
Second.
And second, the motion's been moved and seconded to approve the transfer. All in favor, Mrs. Ward?
Aye.
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 And chair votes aye.
Okay, I'd like a motion to move from the Board of Selectmen.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and approved. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I have the originals here that I can...
You have the originals.
Maybe at the end of the night.
All right, the end of the night, we'll, right.
Right, it's only for the chairman to sign, so we can...
I think that it makes sense then to have your folks sign one, adjourn, and then we'll move ahead. All right, number two, from the Conservation Office, $100 to be transferred to Snow and Ice. Any discussion?
One hundred.
Your motion from the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And the second. All right, Mrs. Ward.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Good. From the Cable Studio account, $5,000 transferred to Snow and Ice. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Move for the transfer.
Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Mrs. Ward?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that's a five to one vote to approve.
Could I have a point for discussion, if I could? Is this the $5,000 for the Cable Studio, was that like upgrade money or something?
Was this the upgrade money?
For the Cable Studio?
I know that we, I'm not sure if it's upgrade money. We receive this cable money every year, about $26,000, and then we appropriate those funds based on what we're going to receive in the general fund revenue, so I don't really know if it's an upgrade.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 From the Zoning Board Clerks', salary, $730. CBA certification, $370. Total of $1,100 to be transferred to Snow and Ice.
So moved.
Second.
What was the total again?
$1,100.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Just on Public Works. So question, question, the question was, Jim, was about whether or not you need to abstain on any vote that would be relevant to the Public Works.
I don't understand why.
Well, because you're, you're employed by Public Works.
I haven't been employed by the Public Works for over nine years.
Yeah. I know that, that, you know, Mrs. Leroy abstains on anything that has to do with a school department because she works for...
Right, I don't work for the Department of Public Works.
Oh, you don't work.
I haven't been there for nine years.
Sorry. Well, Jim, then there's no reason to abstain.
Sure.
Okay. From the Zoning Board Authority Advertising, $168. CBA subscriptions, $100. EBA dues, $232. For a total of $500 to transfer to Snow and Ice. Any questions?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, Mr.?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Board of Selectmen, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 From Land Use Wiring, $200 to be transferred to Snow and Ice.
Where was it from again?
Land use.
Land use wiring.
Wiring?
Wiring.
What exactly is that?
I have no idea. I have no idea what that is. I imagine it's wiring. I have no idea. Strange category, but that's what it is in the budget.
Twenty-four. Land use expenses would include equipment, professional probably dues, cell phones, and... I don't, there it is, wiring inspection. So it's what?
Wiring inspection. Okay.
Yep.
What was the total again?
Total is $20. Discussion, the other discussion, questions? None? Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
All right. From the DPW Fleet salaries, transfer $5,000 to Snow and Ice. Any questions?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Ward?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd, a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
To transfer from Cemetery Overtime, $400 transferred to Snow and Ice. Any discussion or questions?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded?
Aye.
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 And chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From DPW Cemetery Materials, $1,000 transferred to Snow and Ice.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Robichaud?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From Tree Trimming, $4,500 to Snow and Ice.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Rabies Account, $500. Border Health, $250. A total of $750 to Snow and Ice.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Shaking it up a little bit here.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Recreation Account, $1,000 to Snow and Ice.
So moved.
In seconded.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
I know, I'm thinking if I want to ask a question. This was, can I ask a question?
Sure.
This was leftover money from Recreation?
Correct.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Ordinarily, do we do something with that?
It goes to free cash.
Okay.
If any money left over in an account that doesn't get transferred like this, will go to free cash.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Which, by the way, I would hope is our goal next year, is that we wouldn't be doing this, and it would just go to free cash.
Right. I think we're all looking forward to that. From Short Term Interest, $135.17, and from borrowing fees, $264.83, for a total of $400 to Snow and Ice.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From Unemployment Insurance, it says total of $14,750 to Snow and Ice. I guess I'd have a question. I think there's two questions.
Through the chair, if I may, I understand that unemployment was a big, one of the line items that we were running a deficit, or we were looking very closely at. Could you explain how this account is different, or what the status of that is? Sure. We transferred at town meeting $86,000 into there. We had the unknown entity of what were the final bills going to be on unemployment, and so $86,000 was more than what we needed by the $14,750, and because that was a vote at town meeting, and it isn't part of the original budget, we're not held to the constraints of the $5,000 or 3%. Thank you.
So my, my question is about the $5,000 limit. Isn't there a $5,000 limit? Are $5,000 a what, 3% of the original budget?
Right, Tom. But this was voted at town meeting as a transfer into the budget. It's not part of the original budget, so it doesn't, it's not held to that 5,000 or 3% constraints. We could transfer the full amount of the available balance in that account to cover the Snow and Ice.
This is money that we actually moved or added to the budget?
We moved it from that health insurance premium account.
Yeah.
Right. We moved $86,000 into this particular line, unemployment.
Yeah.
But due to not having as high an unemployment bill as was estimated at the end of the fiscal year, we were able to have $14,750 left over that we can then transfer for this usage.
So the $5,000, 3% limit has to do with the original, originally appropriated amounts?
Right.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions?
Move for the transfer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Town Clerk Department Head, $763.13. From the Town Clerk Assistant, $236.87, for a total of $1,000 to Snow and Ice. Any questions?
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye.
Something that's not going to Snow and Ice. From the Town Clerk Department, $230.87 to Dispatchers' salaries, and this is to cover payroll deficit.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Okay. Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Census Account, $679.77. From Elections, $2,220.23, for a total of $2,900 to Snow and Ice. Questions?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From Selectmen's Legal Account, $1,500 to Snow and Ice. Any questions?
Move for the transfer.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Finance Committee Subscriptions, $649.61. From the Finance Committee Mileage, $250.39, for a total of $900 to Snow and Ice. Questions? No, it's removed.
Second.
And seconded?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Planning Board Certification, $600. And from the Planning Administrative Assistant, $600, for a total of $1,200, to Patrolman's Salary, to cover payroll deficit.
Move for the transfer.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye.
From the Conservation Department Head Account, $121.44. The Patrolman's Salary Account, again to cover payroll deficit.
Move for the transfer.
Second.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Town Manager's Vacation Buyback Account, $684.7, to the Building Supervisor Account, again to cover payroll deficit.
Move for the transfer.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd, the clarification, Mr. Kane, did you read the amount on that transfer?
$684.7.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Memorial Day Fund, to the Veterans Director's Salary, $372.26, again to cover payroll deficit.
Move for the transfer.
Second.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye.
From the EMT's Salary Account, $5,000 to the Patrolman's Salary Account. Any questions? I, I do want to, I, I know from my conversation with the Mrs. Allen that the reason for all these payroll things, but maybe you'd want to just kind of let people know why the payroll, the sort of miscalculation that was made.
Sure. The reason that we have such a group of payroll deficits is the budget was for 52 weeks of payroll, but the common practice for budgeting payroll is usually 52.2, so we ran short of the .2 in the budget, so therefore we came across payroll deficits, and we're trying to cover those now.
Right. And that would affect basically anybody that's an hourly employee, correct?
Right. We've rectified that for FY16. We budgeted 52.2, I believe, for the most part.
Any questions about this particular transfer?
Move to approve the transfer.
Second.
Seconded?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
And I'm going to second it because Mr. Seganowicz is going to abstain since it deals with the Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Abstain.
The Finance Committee Subscription Account, $100 to the Finance Committee Secretary Account, to cover payroll deficit. Questions?
Move for the transfer.
Second.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Police Ammunition Account, $500 to the Patrolman's Salary Account. Any questions?
Move for the transfer.
Second.
And seconded?
Aye.
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 Oh, and the chair votes aye, thank you.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Land Use Clerk, $1,732.90. And the Wiring Inspector, $280.80, for a total of $2,013.70 to the Patrolman Account.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the Fire Services Account, $2,549.79. From Second Fire Services Account, $2,159.10. From Fire Electricity Account, $291.11, for a total of $5,000 to be transferred to the Fire Houseman's salaries.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Boyd, move to approve?
And again, I will second because Mr. Seganowicz will abstain. All in favor? Aye. And the chair votes aye.
Abstain.
From the Treasurer's Certification Account, $85.05 to the Assistant Town Accountant Account.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Boyd?
Move to approve?
Second.[1701.62]
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Okay, from the certifications account, thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents. From the assistant treasurer's account, four hundred ninety-three dollars and five cents, for a total of five hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-one cents to the dispatcher's account.
I have a question on this one. On the one before, we were transferring to the assistant town accountant, this one we're transferring from the same account.
I think this one's from the treasurer.
Yeah, and we're transferring to the assistant town accountant at five-one-one-zero-two-five. This one we're count- we're coming from it at five-one-one-zero-two-five. Why didn't we take from in one and put to in the other one?
We're talking about the treasurer's account, right?
Maureen?
Three-one-five-one versus four.
Yep.
The beginning, the beginning five digits are different.
No, they're not. Zero-one-one-four-five-one, five-one, it's zero-one-one-four-five-one. No?
This is not the same, this is a different number here. Right, we're taking from.
Correct, thanks.
Which one was that?
This one. This? It's different though. But it still says assistant treasurer.
The department number.
You just did one from the.
I, I think just the department number's off.
I don't see that to be the case.
Uh, which one are we, which one are we talking about?
The eighty-five dollars and five cents?
That comes from zero-one-one-four-five-one dash five-one-nine-zero-one-zero.
Right.
To zero-one-one-three-five-one dash five-one-one-zero-two-five.
And it says assistant town account. Now, you turn the page.
Yep.
And we have.
Um, where it says assistant treasurer?
Yeah.
It comes from zero-one-one-four-five-one, which is the treasurer's number.
Okay.
To, um.
To the assistant treasurer, once the assistant accountant, once the assistant treasurer.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Board?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the treasurer's bonding account, seventy-five dollars and thirty cents to the Monticrist Regional Planning Account. Cover budget shortfall.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Board?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the accounting dues line item, eighty dollars and forty-seven cents to the assistant town accountant.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Board?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From highway materials, one thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and seventy cents to the highway operator's salary account.
Second.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Board?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the border health certification account, eight hundred eighteen dollars and one cent to the patrolman's salary account.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Board?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the town manager's certification account, forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents to the fireman's houseman's salary account.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Board? Move to approve? And I will second. All in favor? And the chair votes aye.
Abstain.
From the town manager vacation account, one thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars and fifteen cents to the patrolman's salary account.
Second.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Board?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
From the grant administration account, one thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents to the patrolman's salary account.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Through the chair, if I may, um, the grant administration account, I know that, that the department, um, that the Office of Planning Development, uh, has been in flux and such. Could you just, is there any news to, uh, to report as far as this, any stabilization in that, in that office?
I think we have, uh, we've been working to stabilize that. We have, uh, the town planner that's, uh, being, um, promoted up to, um, fill the slot of the director and the grant administrator. Uh, and, uh, we're working some, um, uh, to allocate some resources to, um, compensate for the remainder of this fiscal year, or remain, or for a portion of this fiscal year while we develop a more, a longer-term strategy.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
That's the last one I have.
Now the fun stuff, you get to sign.
Move to adjourn the board of selectmen meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
So adjourn the finance committee meeting?
We're not gonna adjourn, recess.
Recession, recess, recess.
That must mean we're back on. Okay, um, resuming our agenda, uh, we have approval of minutes for June twenty-fourth. Uh, that was our public hearing, uh, followed by our own discussion around the, um, the Warren articles. And, uh, why don't we take them one at a time? Anybody who's had a chance to take a look at the minutes of June twenty-fourth?
I move approval of June twenty-fourth minutes.
I'll second.
I need a discussion on the minutes. We're not hearing none. The, I think there are four of us here who are at that meeting.
Do you want to start with me? Aye.
Start with you Cindy.
They weren't here.
But they weren't here.
I wasn't here.
Do we abstain?
Yes.
Yes, you did abstain.
Abstain.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. So it's, there's four votes and two abstentions. And then, uh, for the meeting of June thirtieth, that was a meeting we held right before the town meeting, um, to determine where we were on the, uh, on the motion, on the articles.
I move for the, uh, approve the minutes of the June thirtieth.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second, and.
Abstain.
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 Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, there's three ayes and three abstentions. Well, the reason there were two abstentions is we have two new mi- members on our, uh, committee and I wanted to publicly welcome, uh, Dr. Maureen Ward.
Thank you.
And, uh, James Rubichaud, who we mistakenly thought was still working for the DPW.
Many moons ago.
For correcting us on that, uh, Jim. You know, I think that, that, uh, we certainly look forward to your contributions to, to the committee. I think as a finance committee, this, this last year has been particularly busy one for us. And, uh, um, if, if anything, I think, you know, I think we, um, worked well together because we have different points of view. And, and it's different points of view and, and different perspectives, uh, that add strength to a committee. So, appreciate your willingness to step up and, and become part of the meeting and look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. It being the first, uh, meeting of, of, uh, July, uh, we would need to, uh, reorganize, a committee reorganization. We have two, um, two positions to consider, uh, one is the chair's position and the second is the vice chair. So, we had, I guess, entertain motions.
Nominations?
Mr. Chairman? If I may, um, this past year has been very stressful for a lot of us. And, uh, I think that, uh, Tom, uh, was kind of, uh, pushed into the role as chairman. During that time, he's done an excellent job. And I just make sure everybody understands that, uh, um, you know, he's, I don't think we could have gone through what we've gone through without, uh, his expertise and all the hard work it's put into it. Having said that, I'd nominate Tom as chair.
Push him again.
I'll second. Do you accept her?
Any discussion, any, any other nominations?
Looks like you're it.
Nobody? Okay, hearing none, we close the nominations and, uh, have a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Sorry.
Thank you. I mean, certainly it's, it's the, the work of the committee that, that makes the job, um, doable. And, uh, again, I can't say enough about the fact that I think as a, as a committee, this group of people, uh, work very hard together. And, and work in a very proactive and constructive way. And, uh, I'm certainly honored to continue this work.
I think all the, you know, work you do in preparation makes it so we really feel like we, you know, know what we're looking at when we get to the meeting, so.
Good.
Other than your collating skills.
We'll help with the collating.
We have nothing but praise for you, we just won't let you collate anything ever again.
And I thought, I thought I was on top of the game today. Jim came by last night to pick up this packet and I said, listen, I'm gonna finish up this, this lovely compilation of, of, uh, transfers, so.
Or a ball.
Don't worry about collating anything.
No more collating.
I came in today and there's a new, new stack of them, all my work was.
What you need to do is, uh, kind of divert those, that work to someone else.
My wife said no. But, you know, that's a good point, I think one of the things that, uh, you know, that I certainly want to try to, uh, get better at is, is delegating. You know, get everybody involved because the more you're involved in the committee, uh, the more ownership you have to it. And, uh, so I would just say that if any time you feel I'm not delegating, uh, bring, you know, bring, bring it to my attention. I've been known not to be good at that, so, uh, feel free to remind me of what my goals are. And we have the, the, um, vice chair position, um, Bob Gunther is currently in the vice chair position. Bob couldn't be here tonight.
Perfect option.
He's not here to defend himself. Uh, but I take nominations for the vice chair position.
I have a question, does anyone actually talk to Bob to see if he would like to continue in that? Have you spoken to Bob to see if he would like to continue?
You know, I have not. And I guess he'd be free to de- decline it should we elect Bob. But I, I haven't, yeah, spoken with him about it. I know maybe I was being a little presumptuous, uh, in not doing that. Question, he's not here. I'd entertain a motion to postpone the election until.
So moved.
And we'll postpone the.
Second.
Okay, the moved and seconded to postpone the election of the vice chair until we have a full, um, committee. Enough.
Aye.
Dr. Boyd?
Aye.
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 And chair votes aye. I do have, uh, the reports from the Department of Revenue, the Financial Management Review.
Nice job collating.
Thank you. See, I'm getting better already. It's the new blood on the committee, obviously. And I've just kind of skimmed through this myself, I, it's, it's, uh, very thorough, um, didn't pull any punches, I think you find it very interesting. Can't say there's a lot that's, at this point in time, uh, anything new that we haven't heard, uh, in, in many of our meetings over the last year with, uh, Department of Revenue, with, uh, Roselli and Clark auditors. Certainly the work that the auditing subcommittees have been doing, uh, pretty much coming, seeing these, the same themes. So, uh, what, what I'd suggest is that when we get together in, uh, next month in August, uh, you'll have had a chance to review this and we'll spend some time, um, sharing our perspectives of, of this report, uh, at the August meeting. Are there any member comments?
I have some questions.
Yes.
Where do we stand on the audit of the insurance, health insurance?
The audit of the health insurance?
Right, wasn't there gonna be an audit done on that?
Well, we had, the audit committee, yes, had, had, um, proposed back in November that one of the things they would look into is an audit of the, the health insurance. Well, what we're looking at is just any, any possible audit, if you remember. We're looking at the possibility of doing forensic audit on any area, in the, um, any area of the town, in the town finances that we had concerns about. In January, when we met with, uh, Department of Revenue, you know, they strongly urged us not to spend our money on a forensic audit. They said they had been through, uh, books between the auditors and the Department of Revenues, they'd been through the town's finances up and down, and they didn't see any evidence. They said, you know, that's not a guarantee that there was no, uh, kind of fraud involved, but they felt that the, the town had other things to spend its money on. They, what we, what we did do then is say, well, let's move forward with, um, an audit on, um, the health insurance trust, not to s- not to see, look for, uh, malfeasance, but, but to look and ensure that the town got all of the stopgap insurance money that it was supposed to get from the, uh, third insurer. And to conduct a, uh, an employee, employee audit to make sure that people who were on the health insurance rolls, um, had a right to be on the health insurance rolls. We brought out a, a second RFP for that, um, and, um, met with, uh, a company called, uh, Cooking Company, it is a auditing company that specializes in, um, health insurance areas. And this was, this was probably the end of May, beginning of June, um, looked into the idea of having them do the em- employee eligibility audit. When the new town manager came on board, um, he said that was something that they would do after the first year, uh, when he came in. So, right now, he just told me tonight that, uh, that we're gonna be working with Cooking Company to, um, to do the employee eligibility, eligibility audit, um, and look at, uh, stopgap insurance.
And that's all that's gonna be looked at?
Yep.
Well, you know, Tony Roselli was right here that night and he said that, you know, that health insurance really needs a deeper look into. Have you ever looked at the UNIS GL report sheets? You know, the reinsurance that we've paid out and what we've been reimbursed for, there's a two million dollar difference. And, you know, at town meeting, it went from the school committee, then they said the finance committee was gonna do it. You know, I think the people in this town want answers.
Well, um.
I think, you know, we need to have an audit of the insurance, a full audit.
Well, um, then that's something we can bring up with the, with the town manager. You know, we'll say that, yes, the amount of money we pay for the insurance was much more than we collected from the insurance, but that's true for most people when they pay insurance. I mean, what you pay for your annual premium, um, you know, God willing that you don't have serious illness, you, you know, you pay much more money than you'd ever, you ever collect in, in doctor's bills. So, the amount of money we paid to, for the premiums, it was a very expensive, you know, insurance, you're right. I think the question we had was at the, when these catastrophic, uh, um, situations started happening, did the town collect the money that it was supposed to collect on, on, on the insurance?
Right, the point I see is, you know, the town pays, well, he told, former town manager said, we're at sixty thousand that reinsurance kicked in. It's really seventy thousand, that started in two thousand twelve.
Yep.
Okay, but the town pays that full claim.
Yep.
And then they file a reinsurance claim, I'll call it, not to re- be redundant with claim. But if you look at those sheets, you know, we've paid out, without having it right in front of me, three million dollars, but we've gotten back is one million. So.
What happened to that?
You know, that's the first thing that jumped out at me.
You mean that we paid three million in?
Claims.
Premiums?
Three million dollars with reinsurance claims, I'll call them, you know, anything above seventy thousand, since, you know, this self-insurance started in two thousand four.
Yep.
But what they show for revenue is only 1. something million. So I'm not saying, we didn't get reimbursed, but if we did, where did the money go?
Okay, well...
That's one of the big questions I have.
All right. Well, then, I think, I think that those, you know, those are questions that we can get answered.
Right, no, I'm not saying we have to get an answer to that, but I just want to understand.
No, 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 I realize that, I realize that, Jim. What I'm saying is, I think that those are questions we can bring to the town treasurer and the town accountant to go through those files and do that investigation ourselves. If it's, if, as I said, if it's the difference between what we paid in premiums and what we collected in reinsurance claims, I'd expect that we probably paid much more in premiums than we ever collected in reinsurance claims, because it's an expensive reinsurance plan. And I think they, I know that they changed it from the 60 to the 70 because the premiums were so high.
Sure, I'm sure of that.
In fact, I talked, in talking with the accountants, particularly Cook, he said more typically would be a $100,000 cut.
Usually, the $100,000 is usually going.
Yeah, because it's, it's a much more affordable insurance. So obviously, the lower, the, the, the ceiling, the higher the premiums.
But I just think that insurance needs a deeper look, is my comment.
Okay, very good, thanks. Any other comments?
Yes. I'll turn out to monopolize the whole meeting. The police station bids, does the finance committee get to look at those?
Since I've been on the committee, we haven't formally looked at the police bids.
I think it'd be a good idea for this committee to look at those bids and see where we stand, how much money has been spent to date on that, and what the, you know, the bids are. If that's something that I think we should look into.
All right, see if we can get that information for our next meeting and have something to discuss. Third one?
Yes. Real estate taxes. Do we have a record of, when I say we, I mean the finance committee, do we have a record of, you know, who the, you know, I'll just start with the top 10 delinquent tax, real estate tax people are, and who was on a payment plan and have those payment plans been met?
We can tell you that the finance committee doesn't have that information. I would think the collector treasurer...
But is that something we should have? Because right now, any money we can...
If it's something, I mean, certainly, we're, we're well aware of the fact, the fact that the, the report speaks about the problem with not, not collecting all the, all the real estate taxes.
Right, and we know that...
We're fine in real estate taxes, and that's something that's increased.
And there are some people that are on a payment plan.
Yeah.
And have those been met, I guess, that, you know, what's spelled out in the payment plan, have they lived up to their end of the bargain?
Are people living up to date in their payment plans?
Right.
All right. Shouldn't that one jump?
Stabilization. Do we get a report every month of how much money's in stabilization? Do we know what the figure is?
We do know what the figure is. We don't get a report every month on it. Stabilization doesn't change unless there's a town meeting to either take money out or put money in. You know, this past year with the, with the town borrowing, if you will, from stabilization...
Right, was that ever paid back?
Yes.
You know what the figure is, and I'm not going to put you on the spot.
I think when we last moved money out of the stabilization at town meeting, well, when we, when we voted to fund the, the former town manager's buyout program, it reduced the amount to somewhere 1.3 to 1.35 million. And then there were several things that we paid for.
Right.
But I don't think they amounted to more than $35,000 at the last town meeting. So it's about 1.3 million dollars.
But didn't they, not to say that the money didn't get put back, but didn't they borrow against that to initially purchase the courthouse?
Did they what?
Did they borrow against stabilization to purchase the courthouse until the bond came clear? So I guess my point is, it'd be nice to get a monthly update to see.
Yeah. I mean, I think we could ask for certainly a report of the stabilization fund.
Right, that's all I'm asking for.
Yep, yep. All right.
One more.
Okay.
I know at one point, when the past DPW superintendent was here, I believe he was working on some sort of a surplus auction. I don't know if you ever go by the town garage, but I go by every day on my way home, and there's, you know, at least a half a dozen pieces of equipment out there that are all lined up. And, you know, right now, we could use anything we can do to get some revenue. You know, a lot of it is outdated, obsolete, but a lot of that has a export market, you know. A lot of that stuff, someone will buy, and they ship it to Haiti or someplace like that. So maybe I'd like to, you know, get the ball rolling on that. Maybe we could raise some revenue. Now, that's a huge amount, but at this point, I think anything would help us out.
So it's a DPW surplus equipment?
We'll call it surplus equipment, right?
All right.
Then I have one.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I have one other.
You said the last one was...
All right.
Aye.
All right, it's just a... I was looking, just the other day, looking through these town reports. And I don't know if anybody can answer this tonight, or maybe it's a simple answer. But every year, from 2001 to 2012, one of the first five or six items on the town meeting warrant is to see if, you know, we'll vote to authorize the town collector treasurer to enter into a compensating balance agreement for fiscal year, chapter 44, section 53F. You know, that's from 2001 to 2012, and in '13, it disappears. Does anybody, does that ring a bell to anybody? We could...
Let me just see the language.
I don't have, obviously, I brought too much stuff as it was tonight.
Save some for next time, right?
But from 2001 to '12, that's in there. But in '13...
Was it Article 13?
No, it's Article, see, it's right there with the pen mark on the bottom, right, the left handers, I believe.
Bring a bell with you, Mr. Moore. You said it was there for up through...
I think I had 2001 to 2012. You know, I was just thumbing through them, looking for different, you know, just looking through it and whatever reason.
I think, I may be wrong, but I think that relates to the treasurer having the ability to borrow money. I think that relates to that.
We could just look into that.
It's, it's nothing that's been earth shaking, but I think it, it's, I think it's related to the authorizing the town treasurer to borrow money.
Guessing the town manager might be able...
Yeah. You can find out for sure.
Just seemed odd that it was in there for 12 years and then, maybe it's nothing.
Yeah. Thanks. See if we can get an answer to that. All right, so we want to look at the insurance, the reinsurance, particularly premiums versus payouts. We'll see if we get some information about the police station bids. The, um... Finance payment plans. What was your third one again?
The health insurance, police station, real estate taxes, and the payment plans.
Oh, yeah, yes, real estate taxes.
The town report thing we just talked about.
Yeah, stabilization fund, DPW surplus equipment.
Surplus equipment.
And Article 6, the entering a compensating balance agreement, chapter 44, section 53F.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one. Just to bring you ready to date, at a town meeting, there was an authorization to create a subcommittee, not a subcommittee, and with the representative from the finance committee, school department, and the seller authority. So we have three people on that committee, and I'll be sending an email to Linda to contact the other two participants so that we can begin the process of getting together. Maybe the news media could probably help us out. We need two citizens' participation, two members from the community on the other committee.
They have to have some kind of accounting background?
Something, to look for someone who understands accounting. So that's, just to bring everybody up to date. So that's in the works, and hopefully we'll be meeting within a matter of two or three weeks to get the ball rolling. The audit for the town has already begun, so it should be completed by, I think, October, November. I think there's a deadline, it has to be completed this year. So we'll be involved in that as, as, as it progresses through the whole process, so.
You're on from the finance committee?
Pardon me?
You're on, you're the representative?
I'm on the, on the committee, yes, yes. Just so everybody's aware of, of progress that's going. That's it.
Good. I'll take the opportunity for public comments.
Thank you. My name is Bob Zbikowski.
I'm speaking to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello? Yeah, my name's Bob Zbikowski. I have a couple of things. One goes back to the special town meeting we had. I just found it odd, there was only three articles on there, and we used new clickers, and they were, they were great. And I believe what, the first one got a unanimous vote to accept the report of the finance committee. You know, it was unanimously accepted. And then I waited, and we, what did we accept? No, it wasn't read, it wasn't passed out.
The vote was, actually, the vote was to hear.
Hear the report.
Hear the report.
We didn't hear it either.
Oh, you didn't hear a report. Mr., you know, Mr. Moran went straight ahead through it. In fact, he emailed me afterwards and kind of apologized because he, he said, you know, "Let me know when I've made a mistake." He said, "I, I do make them once in a while." And, and I let him know that frankly, we didn't have a report that night. So we would have just, I would have just said, you know, "Finance committee does not have a report tonight, to present tonight." So, yeah, the, the town did vote unanimously to hear it, and we never gave it, and I, as I explained to Mr. Moran, you know, had we had a report ready, obviously, I would have, I would have brought that to his attention.
I think the reason why we, you know, slid by all of us is because of the new toys we had, which worked super. The, the second question that I have, something happened tonight. You transferred $5,000, I believe, from the, the upgrades to the snow and ice. Now, the snow and ice is important, but if you've ever sat about three rows back, it's hard to hear, it's hard to see, have there been any upgrades in the last several years? I mean, I, we get this money every year, but I don't think, I don't think it goes to upgrades. I think it just goes into the budget.
So is this on the, the cable TV?
Yes.
Cable account?
I mean, it's just, the acoustics, the acoustics is bad here anyway.
Yes, they are.
And even the people in the back, I mean, you know, we should have either a TV or something. They can at least see you, they can hear you. Normally, I like to watch all my meetings at home because I can do both. I can see and hear you, you know?
Yeah.
I can always turn you down, turn you up. Here, I always sit in one of the first couple of rows because as I'm getting older, I find that people don't talk as loud. So it just, that's just a comment. I mean, we had that money, and in the future, I hope we actually do some upgrades. And I, I thank you also for having, I hope you have the public comment thing on it all the time. At the end's a good time, actually. One thing that Mr. Robichaud brought up that I was going to bring up as well, the, I had requested a while back, a copy of the, I think it was 10 people that owed the most uncollected taxes. And I got that from the town, and that was probably at least six weeks ago.
Yeah.
And I was surprised to find out that there was 10 people that owes over half a million dollars in back taxes. And I understand that if you put all the taxes owed, it's probably over $2 million.
Yeah.
It seems like we're, we're in a, a cash crunch in Winchita, and I would think that, I don't understand how people can, can owe so much money and for so long. I ran across a gentleman not long ago, that he since has lost his house. And I, he owed, you know,